We're on. Today is August 27, 2019. This is a meeting with the Acushnet Board of Selectmen. Will you all rise please and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We've got two sets of minutes that have been distributed. The May 7 regular and executive sessions and the May 21, 2019, regular session.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes of the regular and executive session, Board of Selectmen's meeting of May 7, 2019, regular and executive session, and May 21, 2019, regular session as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Meeting mail, there is none. Under appointments, there are none. Old business, item one is the golf committee empowerment. We've had some discussion over the months of... We've had a golf committee in place for years about better defining what their authority is with regard to managing the golf course, managing the employees at the golf course, making decisions with regard to the budget and the operations of the golf course and more clearly defining that. And Mr. Noble has drafted a document. And what I've suggested, conceptually, is that the golf committee as a body would have the same, would have similar authority to what a department head would have. And this sort of does some of that. And this was just distributed tonight. So I guess what I'd suggest is that you all look at it. This is also delivered to the... Also delivered to the golf committee for their review and consideration. On September 5, which is their next meeting. And that they get back for us and make sure this is acceptable to them. It's acceptable to us, acceptable to them. And I think we need to give them some authority or define what their authority is. Because I know they work hard running that golf course and making sure it's successful. And I think it's something like this is important, so...
Well, I have a number of questions I'd like to present to the golf committees so that'll help get an understanding of exactly what they're looking for concerning this.
Okay.
So...
I don't know if we talked briefly if we would do it as a joint meeting with the golf committee to discuss this, or...
Well, let me post it as a joint meeting in case more than one of you shows up.
That's on September 5.
September 5.
When's it going, where's it going to be?
It can be either here or the golf course. And that's usually... I would do it here because there is air conditioning and comfortable chairs. But that's up to you guys.
I think we should do it here.
Okay.
Okay. What time?
They usually start at 4:30. That's the 5th of September. That's a Thursday, I believe. Third being a Tuesday, and fourth is Wednesday, fifth is Thursday.
Dean, before my birthday, I will not be expecting cake. I will not refuse cake either, if someone were to bring the cake.
I think it should be a holiday. I'll post it with you.
It should be, well, it should be. All right, so that's going to happen. Item two is... Oh, I got to welcome to the table, to the table Julie Hebert, our chief financial officer in the town of Acushnet, who's going to be our interim town administrator beginning September 1.
Thank you.
Welcome, Julie.
Yes.
And Mr. Noble will be leaving us this week. So we're in transition. All right, item two is the appointment of a screening committee. So the town administrator's search, that process is about to begin. We had talked about each of us appointing three members to a screening committee. I've spoken with three people. I've not shared those names with anyone yet. But I'd have, do you two have three people in mind for your designees? Kevin?
I do, I do. As of right now, the way everything stands, the three are in, so...
And they're in? I hope we don't all have the same three. I doubt that.
I spoke with all three of mine and neither one of you two guys have contacted any of the three, so I know I'm safe.
So could I suggest that we all, and I've spoken with all three of mine, could I suggest we submit our names to Ms. Hebert for compilation of a list of the screening committee?
Want to start?
Want to name them? Sure.
Sure, I mean, it's a public meeting.
Yeah, it is, absolutely.
Full disclosure.
Yep. John Roy, a school teacher in the schools. Jennifer Downing was a member of our school committee. And Bob St. Jean, who's the chairman of the finance committee. I suggested to Bob that I would like either him or somebody from his committee. And I left it to him to designate someone else if that was his choice. I hadn't heard back from him if it was going to be someone other than him. But those are the three names that I selected. I've spoken with all of them. Mr. Gasper, you want to go next?
Sure. I chose, I'd spoken to Tom DeCosta. I don't think Tom DeCosta needs any introduction in the town of Acushnet. John Golda, longtime businessman in the community for decades. And I spoke with Ms. LaMonte today. And she said she'd be willing to do it as well.
And three people that I've spoken to and have committed are Heather Sylvia, COA director, John Howcroft, finance committee member, and Les Staken, former selectman of Acushnet.
Only concern I have is two members of the finance committee. Attention. Well, that's not really a problem. That's not a problem.
John?
John Howcroft and Bob St. Jean. I don't see that as being a problem. I don't, I really don't. Okay, that's fine. So that's the mix of people that have been very active in the town. Combination of town employees, non-town employees.
It's a good list.
Yeah, it's a good list, yeah. People that understand, I think, what we expect for inner-town administrators, so I'm happy with that.
Yeah, I'd like to also take a moment to thank a lot of people who have contacted me that had an interest in it. Unfortunately, the board is only able to call on three people for this responsibility. So thank you for everybody who contacted me. I can't say yes to everybody, so I really appreciate it. And if any of the candidates drop out, I'd be more than willing to give one of you a call, so thank you.
Do we, a motion to appoint those nine names as members of the screening committee?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is our screening committee. All right, so further to that same topic. Kevin Pecos, who'd been the interim town administrator in the town of Acushnet before Mr. Noble joined us. We've had conversations with him about doing two things. Number one, sort of leading our search, working with our screening committee to look at applicants and to support Ms. Hebert in her role as interim town administrator. And he's agreed to that role. We've got a letter agreement that's been drafted defining what his job would be, what his compensation would be. We've agreed to pay him $6,000 for that role, which, based on what we learned about, you know, going to a recruiter is a very...
Good number.
Very, it's a very, very good number. And happy to have Mr. Pecos. I know everyone was happy when he was here as interim town administrator, very experienced individual and has a lot of contacts. Will hopefully help us get the right person in place as our next town administrator. So the agreement is been drafted. It's on the table in the selectmen's meeting room. Do we need to vote it?
I have it in my book to discuss. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, let's go, let's go.
I just, I'm just concerned in the first sentence, it says most qualified town administrator to recruit the most qualified town administrator. I think it's important to note that it's probably more the best fit as well as qualified town administrator. Because somebody could be most qualified. It could be a $200,000 salary. And obviously, we're not willing to pay.
One of your qualifications is they got to fit.
Right, and they just got to be a good fit. So I just want to make sure the verbiage and the criteria that we're doing is not skewing the process as saying the most qualified. And then the committee members get that in their heads, thinking it's most qualified. It's a combination of both. And I know that he's going to meet with a selectman, Mr. Pecos will meet with the selectman to develop the recruitment plan. So I guess at that point, we can offer that suggestion to Mr. Pecos in his recruitment plan, but...
I mean, I'd be very willing to see that modified to...
Well, yes. Except I would have to say it's sort of moved because one of your qualifications is got to fit. This person has to fit. So that's fine. It's part of your qualifications. You're also going to be needing to design the search. Another part of it is this letter's already been submitted to the ethics panel. So I don't really want to change it because I'd have to go back through that process again. So if it's acceptable, Mr. Gasper, if we can just let it go with that one of the qualifications is they've got to fit.
Yeah, there's just, there's a few more. If you go down, it just says, you know, meet with a selectman, develop a recruitment plan, develop public advertising, blah, da, 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 which makes sense. Conduct independent searches for candidates, which Mr. Pecos brings to the table because he knows a lot of people. An aggressive outreach reach. Conduct preliminary candidate screening, background reviews, resume verification of information, internet, social media, blah, blah, website, city, in-town employees. And then at the first meeting, conduct telephone interviews with possible candidates. Then the first meeting after that is with the screening committee, all the way down to like step six. And I don't know if we want an individual screening candidates. We said that we were going to get all of the candidates sent a miss letter to our executive secretary so that we know that the screening committee's getting all the candidates as well. I just don't want this process to be skewed. It just seems kind of, I would like to see all of the resumes be put forward to the screening committee so that they're aware of it. Kind of do a rough scratch on it and get some consensus from the committee members to whittle down, whether it's 20 or 30 candidates that apply. You're obviously going to want to whittle that down to maybe 10 for the screening committee to look at the 10 and bring in 10 candidates to whittle it down to whatever the board decides. Five good candidates to put in front of the board. So I just don't want the process, I don't want him to be eliminating people. I would like, if all the resumes are coming in to the screening committee, they have the opportunity to review every resume that's there. Mr. Pecos not eliminating anybody based on information they found at the point. Once the screening committee whittles it down to 10, if there are some folks within that criteria of preliminary screening that Mr. Pecos finds as, eh, a little alarming, he should express it at that point once the screening committee whittles it down to 10, not prior to that.
Correct. And then bearing your comment previously because you'd made this point with me before. So I made sure I wrote into the description that the screening committee shall receive all resumes.
Right.
Not just those recommended for consideration.
That's what I...
It's just the, I don't know if the pecking order is in place where he's going to go down the pecking order and it says, conduct preliminary candidate screening. Yeah, that's fine. I just want to make sure the understanding's on the ground.
You made that very clear, and I did incorporate that. And it's a bullet point, so...
Are you going to be okay?
I'm not thinking I'm going to die here.
Can you wait till the first?
I think Mr. Pecos understands where we are.
Well, he's going to come in and talk to us, right?
Absolutely.
Meet with the selectmen. So we'll develop that criteria to make sure it all matches in and everybody knows what's going on.
Yeah, also, as part of the ethics committee recommendations, Mr. Pecos, at the request of the board, the ethics board has asked the board of selectmen to appoint him a special municipal employee for the purpose of doing this search and as his role as advisor to the interim town administrator.
And that's because of his pension restrictions?
No, it's because of the fact that he's the...
He's an advisor of insurance.
Had me all choked up. It's because he advises us on our health insurance, our dental plan, our vision plan, et cetera. He works for NFP, he was a consultant of the town. So all of that has to be disclosed. And by creating him as a special employee, that's an exemption under 268A. He files the necessary paperwork with the ethics board. They give him back a letter that says everything's kosher.
I think we have some employees that are special municipal employees.
We have a lot of special employees, so...
It's done, it's been done in the past before.
Okay, so we're good as is?
We're good as is.
Do we, we haven't voted on signing that letter previously?
Yeah, so what I would recommend is you recommend that you vote to sign the agreement with Mr. Pecos and appoint him a special municipal employee all at the same time.
Is there a motion to that effect? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. New business, remote participation policy for first reading. Just distributed, he just helped us understand.
The finance committee... Is it catchy? Because I should be leaving if it is.
The remote participation policy is put forth at the request of the finance committee, who's had issues with the attendance of people coming in from Boston, particularly with commuters. They get stuck in traffic. They'd like to be able to remotely participate till they get here. And it requires the board of selectmen to adopt a remote participation policy. And I've also put it in that the committee itself would have to adopt the policy. So certain committees don't want to do it. They don't have to. Certain committees do want to do it. They would have to say, yes, we are going to adopt it as a committee. The board adopts it for the town. The committee adopts it for the committee.
Same policy, basically, Mr. Noble.
Same policy.
So is that, is that really fall into the criteria? Because if you look at number four on the criteria, personal illness, personal disability, emergency, military service, or geographic distance.
It's the geographic distance.
On occasions, I guess you could claim that.
Or we could get into, one of our board members is a tax accountant and she's busy that.
Yes, I understand.
And so she could actually dial in from Boston. And so I think that would be very worthwhile for us.
As long as they're not driving and trying to see what's going on. Because this says that it's got to be visual, right? If the meeting is taped live.
It has to be live.
Audio.
This, this would be visual. I could leave that on there. And it meets the device for communicating. The audience needs to see it. You need to be able to see it as a committee member. They need to be able to hear. But we'll probably be using more like the smart screen. And whether a person uses the visual part of their phone or not, that's up to them and taking a risk. But if they, if she does it from her office, she's going to Skype in or...
Do we have to adopt this for us?
Oh, yeah, if you want to use it yourself, you have to adopt it yourself. You don't have to.
I don't love the idea.
My recommendation, the first part...
I mean, if they were in front of the committee, I don't love it.
It needs to have a good reason. That's what, that was the point of this. We actually did it once on the selectmen phone for one of the selectmen due to illness. We actually remotely communicated via phone, so...
This came actually into existence in 2016 by state law. Prior to that, it wasn't legal to do that.
Okay, so it was prior to that?
Yeah, I don't want to talk about that. And so it's twofold. The selectmen adopted for the town. And then the committee or board or commission adopts it for themselves.
But is there an individual decision every time made?
No.
No.
You adopt it by policy or you don't. Okay, so the board of selectmen adopts that this is an available option for committees, boards, and commissions. Then each commission, board, or committee can then decide whether they wish to adopt it.
We could adopt it for the town but choose not to do it ourselves.
Correct.
Okay.
It's just there as an option. But you have to, there's a process where you have to declare that this is taking place. You have to announce it during a public meeting. The chair does. And if somebody fills in for the chair, that's their responsibility. And I don't think it's something that will be used much. It's just there in case it needs to be used. It's the way I read this.
Well, let's read it and we'll bring it back. Let me bring it back. I haven't, I mean, this was another thing we just got. It's first reading. First, yeah, we're not going to take an action.
It's first reading.
First reading, it was just distributed, so we're... All right, so we will bring that back. Item two, under new business, Unique Media Systems quote approval for installation configuration of carousel units for the cable committee. So requested expenditure, $8,275. And we've got a quotation from a company called Unique Media Systems for a carousel bulletin board.
Right, we've had difficulty with the bulletin board, as Mr. Gasper mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. We'd like to replace the piece of equipment. The quote is $8,275. It's 10 years old. I strongly recommend that we do it. We have the funds available to do it, but it requires a board approval.
And what, one more time, what is the bulletin board?
The scrolling menu, if you will. It tells you when meetings meet and when, who's on the committees and...
So right now, I think somebody's winding a scroll.
Yeah, it's pretty bad.
Yeah, so I've gotten a lot of complaints on this, actually. It says something like spotlight, a bright light, or something on the screen, and it just flashes. So what used to, as Mr. Noble says, it used to tell you when the upcoming meetings are, who's on committees, like they would announce finance committee, and they'd give you all the members' names and the board of selectmen, board of health, and all that jibber jabber. It's no longer there and it just sits there and pulsates, bang, 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 it's like constant. The shows are able to go out. But for some reason, the bulletin board has been skewed, I'll use that word, for a couple of months now.
Designed over an older technology.
So it's really, they say it was cable, Comcast company, and we just spent, I think it was $30,000, something thousand dollars on new equipment. So, you know, another $8,000 bucks. And I'm hoping that this is going to wrap up that whole business.
Oh, no, we have many more things to do.
Yeah, we have a lot of...
Basically, the whole system was junk. And it hadn't been updated in years. So we did the guts of it. And now I'd like to restring the connection to the outgoing cable so that our quality of image is better. I've got Comcast willing to help us get that done because we are lacking the expertise to do it.
Do we, do we know all the things that we have done? Can we format that?
Sure.
The expenditures we've done in the last couple of years so that we know, so that when they come in and they say, well, this is what needs to be done, we can say, why, we just did this two years ago and that don't make any sense, so we're not...
That's easy for you.
And this money is coming from cable revenue.
There, we have a dedicated account. We can't use it for anything else except cable equipment.
Paid by residents, cable fees.
Right.
And we need to bring in our system up. Is there a motion to approve this expenditure, $8,275?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Silence means up. That passes. Next line, Department of Public Works, Chapter 90, Year 20, proposed road paving. Mr. Menard and Sylveer back again. Welcome.
Good afternoon. How are we doing?
All right.
You guys took the papers I gave you. Some of the ones you kind of asked for with the ones in the water. I went, had to go further down on the list to get them. By Hathaway Road was the one I actually presented last year, last meeting. And I'm still sticking with that one. The water main was put in in '64. So that ain't one of our main priorities that we're going to be tackling over the next five, 10 years anyway.
'64?
1964, that one was done, Hathaway Road. But that's newer.
That's a good one, that's a new one.
That is a new one.
Now, we got ones 1914, 1912, 16. So, you know, all the stuff down here is over 100 years old. So that one...
So we're comfortable, we're not going to be tackling that in the next...
Correct. And that's, you know, a newer one in my eyes, so... Ones which is down lower. These are all on the pavement management plan. It's just these are down further on the list.
They were 2022.
Yeah, these are out a little bit. But these are actually, because of the water mains was installed.
Come on, what do you, I'm not sure what you're looking at.
The conduit, Homestead, Myrtle, and Wilbur. Because they're smaller roads. They're off of Middle.
Right, they're across from the police.
Yeah, and actually, we were talking about this with the other previous boards four, five years ago doing these roads. These ones, the water mains were installed in '05 through '07. Them streets were done. So they're fairly new mains that are all ducked align. So then we're not basically touching for a long time either. So that's why I proposed them.
Now, why are you jumping to 2022?
Because the other streets, we'd probably be doing the water mains, a lot of them, like Cleveland and all them that were on that list, is 1917, 16.
Now, Hamlin's on here, are we doing Hamlin?
Now, Hamlin, not this year because that, we just had that one meeting to the bridge.
We're going to do the patch.
I'm going to do the patches and house to hold it off for a few years. That's kind of what we decided.
This is also suggesting in 2019, This is also suggesting in twenty nineteen. Middle to Leonard, middle to Morse's. Are you doing that?
This year, no. But that, that one, if the board.
How about Olivera to Maine, Olivera to George, Roosevelt to South Maine?
But again, I'm, I'm picking the ones that were in worse shape too. Um, I, I think that pavement management plan to me was like a guide. It wasn't in stone, you know, cause even the guy told me when, when we had that. He said that, you know, you use it as a guide, but the, you know, some roads are gonna get worse than others over time, you know what I mean? So that's where you gotta, you kinda pick and choose. You, you use it as a guide, not to set it in stone, in my opinion. This is my opinion. Um, I mean, the board's more than welcome. We'll look at these streets and and if you feel that the other ones are worse than these, you know.
They're a disaster.
Yeah.
But so you, but you're skipping, you're skipping from nineteen, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. So you're skipping ahead three years to pick streets.
Cause again, in my opinion, these are worse than every other one.
Well, they're definitely worse, but that's not what the pavement management plan does. I mean, the pavement management plan.
Again, I'm here, the board's the ones that picked the streets. I, I don't care either way. You guys give me the thing and I will put them out the bid. Um, it doesn't matter to me really.
My, I mean, my only objection, Mr. Menard, is we spent twenty-five thousand dollars on a pavement management plan.
Yep.
We spent twenty-five thousand dollars bringing an independent consultant in to look at the streets in the town of Acushnet and say, based on the doll, based on the condition of all of your roads and the dollars you have to spend, we'd like you to tackle, you know, not your best roads, but you know, let's call it, you know, they rank them like I think A through E or one through five, but five, you know, we want you to tackle some of your Bs, some of your Cs, some of your Ds. Some in each category and suggesting sort of a mix of those. And we're jumping ahead four years.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the, that's their opinion. My opinion must be different than the pavement management plan. I, I would rather do an older road than a, than one that's not as in bad shape. Uh, my, if you wanna go there, mine's the first, my street's the first one on the list. And my street is nowhere near.
Your street's on the list.
So, you know what I mean? If that's the case, why are we jumping ahead? Let's do my road and get everybody pissed off, cause that's where I'm looking at, you know, these roads that are gonna. That's my opinion. Either way, I know you don't suppose you're supposed to stick this plan, but in my eyes, I don't see it that way. I'm seeing I'm going for the worst roads. If the board, you guys wanna go with the plan, I don't care. You guys, you guys are the ones that's gonna pick them. I'll put it out the bid, whatever ones you guys decide. It's not.
Well, here's, here's what I'm struggling with, Mr. Menard. And I, I, I mean, I've been through this. So we, we spent twenty-five thousand dollars for somebody to independently come in and look at our roads and, and they recommended your road gets done and that's, and that's fine. We have somebody that's not you recommending that your road be done, somebody independent of the town recommending your road, but not knowing you live there. But you know, when I, when I look at the plan that says we should spend, you know, the cost of everything to get all of our roads done, fifteen point six million dollars. And they're saying that we could spend forty-two percent of fifteen point six million dollars, forty-two percent of the money on seven percent of our roads. So we've got sixty-one miles of roads in a, in a cushionet and spend seven percent of the money, excuse me, spend forty percent, forty-two percent of the money on seven percent of our roads.
How much is forty-two percent of how much?
Six point five million dollars.
So that's almost.
Their numbers, and their numbers may not be.
So let's say that's three million dollars. We have three hundred.
No, six point five, saying six point five million dollars on all of our roads.
Fifty percent of six million is three million dollars, correct? Fifty percent, you're saying forty?
No, the total, but the total expenditure they've identified, right?
Okay, yeah, well, I'm just gonna give you. Well, I'm just gonna give you a thing. If the guy's saying, we're gonna come up with that kinda money, we get three hundred thousand dollars a year to.
But what, what, what they're doing is they're trying to balance the dollars we spend keeping our, you know, they looked at, you know, they classified our roads between minor arterial, local and collector. And not only just our worst roads, but you know, our worst roads are our worst roads, but but the roads that are getting high travel and the roads that are seeing high volumes of cars, we need to maintain those roads before those roads get worse. Rather than put our dollars onto roads and we need to do them all. We need, with a plan, but rather than spend forty-two percent of our, of our money on roads that people aren't traveling on, acknowledging people live there, but balancing it all and, and prioritizing roads that are in very difficult shape, acknowledged and putting resources and time and materials and money into those roads and, and skipping the plan that we spent twenty-five thousand dollars on just doesn't make sense to me.
And again, to me, in my opinion, that was supposed to be used as a guide, not in stone. And even they told me that roads get worse. One year, roads change, you know what I mean? So these guys looked at it five years ago, but then roads.
But you came in with a plan last week.
Yep.
And this week you're coming in with a completely different.
Well, because you asked me the ones for the water mains. That's why I came in with this one. I gave you the.
Skip forward four years to get those names.
Yeah, because of the water mains. If you look at the list, a lot of them streets, they've got nineteen sixteen. You wanna look at Cleveland and, and them that. And the other ones, we were thinking about doing sewer on Nice Lane and, and Middle Road. So.
When, when do you think we're gonna do sewer on Nice Lane?
Huh?
When do you think we're gonna do sewer on Nice Lane?
Well, hopefully within the next few years, it's, it's more funding. I'll, I'll go tomorrow. You guys give me money, I'll go tomorrow.
I don't think we can do sewer on Nice.
Before five years. You can't dig up a road. We have a, we have a bylaw that states if we tower a road, you can't touch it for five years after that. So I think, I think if we're looking to do sewer, I'm pretty safe to say depending on the area that sewer is looking to be done at, you won't wanna go to that area and do any of the roads now because more than likely especially the way the CWMP's breaking it out in phases. One, that was the urgent one, but then you're talking about two over there where a lot of roads are in bad shape and things of that nature. Those three roads actually have conduit, Myrtle, Wilbur and Homestead, actually all sewered.
They're already sewed already now in, in the water.
Do infrastructure over there. And that's kinda what we charged the board with. Can I, can I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go.
This thing, it, it, it's very, I don't understand. It's very disturbing, first of all, because I, I talk to a lot of people in the field that know about roads and things of that. And so this level and overlay. Um, and I've also talked to Mr. Menard to confirm what I've been told. Level and overlay, um, not a big fan of it. A lot of people aren't big fans of it.
What is, what is level and overlay?
I'm gonna explain that right now. It's basically a one inch, and Dan, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I've been through this a little bit. It's basically one inch of mix over the road. So what they do is they level the road. They come in and do a one inch grind just to level it. And then they pour one inch of mix over it. They say it's good for about five years and the roads jump after that.
They don't even grind it. They just put it, they put a.
So you can't even do that. Level and overlay doesn't even make sense then.
It's just, it's overlaying the road, existing road. And a good example of that is Hamlin Street. That isn't, that was an overlay, that road there. So you're putting an inch of mix over it. If you don't got a good base underneath, you got nothing, you know what I mean? So if you got a good base, you can throw an inch of mix over. If you do not have it, you cannot overlay it. You just waste the money. You can put asphalt on top of.
Junk road. And so the mill level and overlay is what, two inches? They mill it two inches and put two inches of mix on.
Correct, mill. So now, and again, a lot of them streets, you have to have four inches of mix. If you do not have four inches of mix on some of these roads, we do not have four inches of mix on.
Yeah, so this isn't really etched in stone because I've learned by talking to a lot of people, they say you can't, you can't level and, or mill, level and overlay that road because you don't have enough mix in, in the, in the, what do you call it? The subsoil there, the twelve inch criteria that we have in our road standards. So you have to put twelve inches of concrete back, let it settle over for a year. So a lot of these numbers, what's, what's, I, I think, we, we're already behind schedule on two thousand eighteen. So we've, we've fallen way behind on two thousand eighteen. We've fall, we fell short two hundred and fifty thousand bucks. If you look at the two thousand nine, now let's just go along with this. You look at two thousand and I don't know how they, nobody explained to these people how, what monies we have available. You look at two thousand nineteen, they're expecting us, they're looking at it saying you're projected to spend one point five million dollars. We only have in, incoming funds of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars every year. So you're falling short right there on, on this one by eight hundred and twelve thousand. You go to two thousand twenty, they're expecting you to pay one point two three nine million dollars minus the three hundred and sixty you get every year. You have eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
What are chapter ninety-one? What are chapter ninety-four?
It's roughly three hundred and sixty. That's why I'm using that number. So, so, so then you look at, so then look at two thousand twenty-one. They want us to spend two point nine million dollars. We only have three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to spend. You look at two thousand twenty-two, the five-year plan, two point seven eight five million dollars. We got three hundred and sixty. We have two point four shot in that year. So in the end, the total amount of dollars just for the, for these roads right here, the five-year plan is ten million, ten, ten point two million dollars this, these five years. I don't have.
Oh, fifteen point six is a total.
I don't know how many more you got.
It's a total.
But ten point, so we got ten point two million dollars worth of work we're looking at in, in, in five years and we basically are gonna have two million dollars available to us. We're eighty percent shortfall. How are we ever gonna do any of most of these roads?
Isn't that making a better case though, that we should stick to things in the order that they were recommended?
No, and his, and his why, because the, the numbers are skewed. I mean, you look at what, what he's put together here, and this is where I really got confused. So you look at the, the roads that he put together. Dan's been doing this for years. So he's put Hathaway Road on here, right? He's claiming it's four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And you come to these, these guys here. And, and their Hathaway Road. Where is Hathaway? It's in two thousand, where's Hathaway Road, Dan?
On twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. So we're looking at twenty twenty. They're saying it's five hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars approximately. The plan's off by a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Okay? Then you look at, you look at, let's look at the conduit.
They don't have Dan.
They have Dan, yeah, this is.
Let's look at conduit, doesn't matter. So it's arbitrary numbers. So how's the board make any sense of what we got planned?
Well, they, they must have a number, Kevin. I think they use, they have a, a number probably for the state and they get that. So I'm, I called Keaton directly to find out what's, oh, go off what we paid last year for.
Right.
So that's why, so.
Add a couple of bucks for.
Where he's using a, a different number than I'm.
State average. Let me, let me, let me, so that was, that one wasn't bad off the Hathaway Road one. It was only off a hundred and thirteen according to the pavement management plan. But let's look at the next ones, conduit, Homestead, Myrtle and Wilbur, right?
Yeah, those numbers are way different.
Dan's got it as a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, which, you know, I'm looking at that number going, how can it be? That's a five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar difference from what the pavement management plan. So I don't.
Well, they're doing complete reclamation. What are you, what are you doing?
That's what I am.
Yeah, there was conduit, conduit darling, Homestead, but they're doing reclaim.
Reclaiming, saving. That's police details.
So you're taking it down to the gravel and?
Yep, reclaiming.
You, that's what you're doing as well.
Yep.
Now, how's your value that different from there?
I don't know. I, this is what we do. I've done it for years. And this is what we've been, I paid what we paid last year for reclaiming. I, I, I actually called Keaton and gave me a higher number, a little higher number than they did last year. But it's, again, it's just still gonna go out the bid. But, you know, for the paving, police details, I got aprons in there, I got everything, so.
I mean, I, I, I understand the argument. And I'm not worried about the numbers, cause they're looking at a twenty twenty-two number and who the heck knows what the prices are.
Yeah, he might have went off, he might have went off.
I have no idea.
So I have no idea. Thousand dollars adjusting for inflation.
But it's relative. So the key, of course, is if you go in order of the pavement management plan. And they even said, on occasion, you're gonna have to skip over and do something that, because it fell apart or because you just plain have to.
Correct, that's what we.
But the concern that I have is that you, you're jumping over some other streets significantly to go to twenty twenty-two and pick up these other streets. Would you be better off going back and picking out some of the streets that are in the pavement management plan, which are not affected by water and sewer lines? That would be in the order of the plan and then reaching down and picking up conduit or something of that nature and, and picking some of the low hanging fruit at the bottom of the list? Would that be more efficacious use of our money?
Well, you're falling, you're still falling way behind. We're, we're never keeping up with this plan. This plan's junk. And in the long run, this plan is junk and I hate to say it like that.
No, it's not junk. It's just, it's just that they've assigned the priority of the streets based on the condition of the roads and what you're gonna reclaim.
Condition of the roads, traffic, number of cars, number of cars usually.
But the fact that you still need to go by an, an order. Otherwise, why did we bother to do this plan in the first place?
I don't understand the priority. You got, you got a road here, Myrtle, it's a hundred percent garbage in two thousand seventeen when they did the plan, but yeah, we're gonna wait five years to do it. When they've been dealing with a hundred percent garbage for the last decade. And then that's the problem is these people, these people have been paying taxes all these years and they live on a garbage road and they've been driving up and down, God forbid if they have babies and baby stoles. I mean, I get the complaints in my neighborhood and my neighbors, no way around the five-year plan and, and we gotta set rocks with that.
That's the point.
Go ahead.
I don't, I don't get it.
The point is that you wanna, you don't have a lot of money. So you have to make your money go as far as you can. By spending money to keep good roads good and occasionally reach down and pull a bad road and make it better is a more effective use than just always picking your worst road. Cause it means your costs are higher because you're always fixing the worst road. So for example, if we do this at the expense of other roads, those other roads fail faster and you have to spend more money to bring them back to life. So the idea is spend your valuable resource.
If you believe that the level overlay, which nobody agrees as level overlay is junk. So those numbers, and that's not gonna, it's gonna be a mill level overlay at minimum.
No, 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 you, you missed the point. I, I concede that, that the road, whatever they describe for the road maintenance, that's not what I'm interested in. I'm interested in what Dan tells me to do to these roads. What the ma, the management plan tells me is which roads first? Which gives you the greatest value for the money spent?
Which, which roads are traveled the most by cars in the town of Acushnet?
I, I understand that we wanna keep taking care of our main corridors because everybody's traveling and I can agree to a certain point. But when you're telling somebody that's had a detrimental road for the last fifteen years and you're gonna, you listen, you know what? A hundred, your road is, so I'm not knocking on the doors. Your road has been garbage for fifteen years. Thank you very much for paying your taxes. You're gonna wait another ten years because by the time we get funding, we'll be ten years before we get to you. So you're gonna deal with your crappy road for twenty-five years. I don't see common sense in that. I don't.
It's not, common sense is the wrong word. Let me just jump in.
Right.
So, so, I mean, we, we, before I was on the board of selectmen, I mean, I sat in the audience and, you know, listened to this being proposed. I mean, this plan, December twenty seventeen was, was finally adopted and accepted. And, you know, what I struggled with is for the last, you know, year and three quarters, I guess, or before we, I started drafting this August of seventeen. So there was an August seventeen draft. The finals, December seventeen. We had it, we accepted it. We paid for it, twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, a year and a half later, we're saying, this is junk. I, we're not gonna do this. I don't know why we paid for it. I don't know. These people don't know what they're talking about. They don't know what we're doing.
I'm not blaming the company at all. I'm not blaming the company at all, Mr. Cabral. I, I don't think the communications was right. When, when the company came in, did they ever sit down and, and would you, or Kathy, for any amount of time and discuss what was going on in the town? Or were they just giving a roadmap and saying, here we go? Did anybody ever tell them that there's only three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year and not two million, or three million dollars a year? Because.
Yeah, that's disturbing.
This is, this is very disturbing. And I'm, I'm just looking at it. We, we have a problem before. We went to Quaker Lane, we did Gammons Road, by the way. Those numbers are so far off in this plan. So I'm questioning, I am questioning some of the integrity of the plan. I'm, I'm just trying to make sense for the residents that have been suffering all these years with garbage roads. And again, I have roads in my neighborhood that I, my, my residents complain about. And I tell the people, how do you think we look when you tell the people there's other priorities? This road, and while I live in that neighborhood, that road's not a priority. It's a dirt road now. It used to be Todd, but that's a dirt road, but it's not a priority anymore because we gotta go off and do somebody else's road that's in ten times better shape than yours. But we're just gonna spend a hundred grand doing that one. We could spend a hundred grand and do three of these roads and make you people happy. It's what it comes down to. And that's pretty much what these numbers, you look at some of the numbers, it's like, I'm gonna spend a hundred grand on a road that's not so bad and I'm gonna tell these three speeds or four speeds, I'm gonna, I could only spend a hundred and thirty-five. And don't worry, I'm gonna wait five or ten years before we ever get to your roads. I, I, I don't think that's right to tell taxpayers and residents. And as much as we have to do that to a certain degree, it's not like we're taking roads not from the plan. It's, it's, it's manipulating the plan to work into what we see with water infrastructure and sewer and we're gonna manipulate the plan. There's no way around not manipulating the plan. Number one, you don't have the funding source in place not to manipulate this plan. So there's nothing etched in stone. It's not like we're, we're, we're going way off base and saying none of these roads are in the five-year plan. But we're gonna do them anyway and we're gonna totally ignore it. What I think Mr. Menard and Ms. Silver did is try to use, you know, some common sense along with the plan and say, look, I can get all this done. These people have been suffering. I mean, it's, it's common sense. You say it's not common sense. I know there's not much comment about common sense anymore, but let's face it, you gotta look at these people and, and have some sympathy for them. I went to Dan's Road, Morse's Lane. I know, I, I used to hang out. I mean, the end of the road up to a tonther and everything else, you're telling me that's traffic? That's not traffic. You, you've got twenty people that live up that road, twenty-five people that'll live up that road. It's not a heavily traveled road. People cut through Homestead, Myrtle, Wilbur, constantly and conduit constantly. So, I mean, especially with the traffic over at Ball's Corner, people always cutting up the side street. I mean, it's a disaster. I, I just, I can't fathom telling somebody the, the pavement management plan says it's, you're a hundred percent priority, but you're waiting five more years on top of the fifteen you've already waited. And, and, and just so everybody's aware, and I want the taxpayers at home to be aware of this, the board of selectmen back in two thousand sixteen or seventeen actually spoke with the DPW. When we took over the DPW in two thousand fourteen, the townspeople voted for the board of selectmen to take over the DPW. We had conversations about Myrtle, Homestead, Wilbur and conduit four years ago. And nothing's been done with those roads. So I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm looking at this going, hey, it's on the plan. I, I, I kinda, I was on the board at that time, Mr. Cabral. I know you weren't, but you kinda make a comment.
The roads are.
You make a comment to somebody. I'm not trying to say take the plan and scrap it. I, I will tell you this. There's, there's, there's definitely a detrimental mistake made in the funding sources because these roads, you've seen what I just did, the four roads, that's a five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar difference. You can't, you ain't funding inflation for five years and saying it's costing me five hundred and eighty-six more thousand bucks. There's no way, no possible way. That's four times the amount of money.
I mean, disturbing to me is, is why we, and again, this was before me, why we accepted a plan that has a spending one point seven million dollars a year when we've got.
It's overlooked or whatever it may be.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
Here we are now looking at it and trying to discuss it. I know that we have seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars right now available, but you can't use all that money up because you have to go off of bids and things of that nature. I, I just think that it's something, you know, he's put something forward, the board charged them, Ms. Silver and Mr. Menard. Find us, we wanted to get something done. We said that doesn't need water infrastructure. They went off. They said, hey, this is something that we talked about years ago. It's a hundred percent. I think the lowest priority is eighty-five percent or eighty-four percent. Part of conduit. You're not gonna go there and do part of conduit and not do the rest. It costs you more money to send them back over there two years later, cause now they're moving all the equipment. So the board's gonna be conscientious of, of where we're doing roads. For instance, Hamlin Street, it calls for First Avenue. You have Second Avenue that's there. If Second Avenue's not on the freaking list, what we need to do is put second and we're gonna go out of order, Mr. Cabral. You're gonna say, well, that makes sense. Are we gonna send them back over three years?
On the list of twenty-nine.
Right. Are we gonna, are we gonna send them over there three years later to do a little side street like second and not do first and second while they're doing Hamlin Street and bang it all out? Cause all their equipment, see, it's gonna be far cheaper to do second and first while they're doing Hamlin Street than it is to bring the equipment back. It's all.
I know First and Second. I mean, those, those roads are, are.
It's garbage.
They're twenty nineteen roads and we're jumping to, and we're jumping to twenty twenty-two. So again, why are we doing that?
They're not, they're not twenty nineteen.
Yeah, they are. They're twenty nineteen.
Well, where's First Avenue, Second Avenue?
Main Street, the First Ave, First.
Oh, that's, yeah, but Hamlin Street, cause it's Hamlin Street, Roger.
It's part of Hamlin Street. Yeah, it's, well.
It's gonna be.
That's, that's Main Street, right? It's.
No, it's Ham, no, Hamlin, Roger's right. We got, I got Hamlin Street identified here. Um, it's a whole mill level and overlay. But second and third and first, I don't even know if third is an accepted road.
I'm confused about how they're, if they're talking about doing first, second and third, or they're talking about doing.
I think that's.
Oh, they're doing sections.
They're doing sections. That's just sections.
Oh, yeah, that's following, that's right. Cause Lenning Street.
Hamlin is the street he's looking to do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sections. It's not, that's from first to this.
Instead of doing Main Street to Middle Road and banging out the whole Hamlin Street. They break into smaller sections, just, and that doesn't make any sense. Why would you do? If you go from Main Street to Second Ave, it's probably a quarter of a mile. Why am I gonna stop at Hamlin to First Ave and do that and come back?
They broke it down.
They, they do, but it's, it's, it should be done more of a, a process of looking at it and saying, what, there, how bad are the side speeds off the main road that we're doing? You know, if there's only two, like first and second, third, I, I think it's a dirt road. I don't even think that road's Todd, so it's on the list.
Avenue was on twenty twenty-two.
Right? Why, why would you do that? Would you ever, if you were there and you knew the two side speeds were short roads, you know, a hundred feet long? The equipment's over there. Wouldn't it possible to have them go back over to that side of town and travel twenty miles back over the other side of town instead of, well, you're there, bang this out and it's only fifteen grand to do each road? Is that sixty grand to do each road, right? That's the way I look at it.
Yeah, first, first.
Definitely cheaper, cause they're, they're, it's easy to.
First Ave is a twenty twenty-two road.
Yeah, I, that's what I, that's what I was trying to say. It's, it's twenty twenty. It's, that's the way they broke Hamlin Street up then. So I mean, they're all on the list, but it's, it's, some of it is common sense. You said it's not, it is some of it. You have to use common sense and say, hey, why aren't, like Dan might come in and make a recommendation to the board and say, we're gonna do Hamlin Street and, and, and Mr. DeRoche might say, well, what about first, second and third ave? Are they accepted roads? Yes. How's the water infrastructure? Good. Then why don't we do first, second and third ave while we're doing Hamlin and bring down the cost?
In, in my opinion, common sense also in twenty twenty, there's, this has got some sections of Middle Road. Where it's suggesting we spend some fairly short dollars maintaining portions of probably the highest traveled road in the town of Acushnet. So that's, that's in twenty twenty, taking a road that is in decent condition. That is a, uh, a road that is in decent condition. That is a, in decent condition. And I, you know, they've got a priority, they got PCI, you know, they're, they're basically on a scale of zero to 100. They're putting Middle Road in the 50s and 60s. So, it's in decent shape. But what they're saying is you should spend some resources now maintaining Middle Road.
Again, we
Yeah, they also got in 2019, they got Leonard Street to Fairway.
We're, we're here two weeks ago when we kind of discussed this. And Middle Road is one of the streets we're thinking of getting sewer, hopefully, within the next few years. So, that's one, why we're going to spend money.
Five to six years away from putting sewer anywhere.
And you want to rip up a five or six-year road, brand new road, do that all over again?
No, I'm just suggesting to you.
See what happened when we didn't, the reason why that road is collapsing, the side of Middle Road is because if you look at the way the road was cut, that was from water infrastructure a dozen years ago.
06, 05.
Was that when it was done? So, the roads are, that's collapsing because I, I will, I will go on record and saying is, when you do, when you open up a road for water, correct me, Dan, anytime, water or sewer infrastructure, you cut that road open, okay? You're doing a reclamation at that point, total reclamation at that point. You have to put down that pipe. You have to put down that subsoil, that subbase, the 12 inches of subbase, that's a requirement for roads, building roads in the town of Kuschenet. You have to let that road settle for one year. So, the plan, again, we're going to be looking at this plan, Mr. Cabral. And we're going to say, water infrastructure's there. We're going to have to look at the cost of it, the water infrastructure. We're going to allocate some funds because you need to put some tower over the, overlay to make it, let it sink. And then we're going to have to say, we're going to set aside $100,000 for next year because we're going to come back and redo that road because of settling.
What's an event for do at the top of that road? What, what level of, would that be, that probably level in overlay?
No, they milled that. They had a milling machine. Yep.
That's a milling overlay.
So, they milled two inches out of that and then put two inches of mix back on top. That's what they did over there.
See, and, and, and the other thing I'd like to talk about about roads so we don't get in trouble again, because we did Leonard Street and I've got some complaints.
They left again, like you just said, that, that was done, that was probably over a year when they did that, that, that gas trench. So, they put their patch and let it settle.
And let it settle.
You're aware of that. You travel that a lot. And that's what happens. You get it. And they just repatched it. And then they finally now, it's been a year, and they just milled it and, and, and put a two-inch patch of the whole thing.
We've had numerous complaints. I think you brought up
Oh, yeah. I called, I called him back.
So, when we do the mill in overlay, right, I think we're, you know, Dan's got to get out there and stay on these guys. Because I think we learned a hard lesson with Leonard Street. Something happened. Something got slipped away from us. And they raised the surface of that road and it's not contoured right. And it's still not right, in my opinion.
Well, the top of Hamlin Street's on.
Well, we're talking about Leonard because we paved the whole road. And, and the way to backwash, I know it's country drainage, but some of it is a little bit higher than what it should. So, when they're saying, we're going to go in and mill, we're going to make sure that they're milling the appropriate amount and they're putting back the same amount so that road doesn't change the height to everybody's driveway. Because Mr. Cabral knows this for sure. I think it was the guy at the top of Leonard Street and I got some complaints recently.
It was an 11-inch drop from the center of the road.
Training it right by the river and the bridge. There's people over there that have complained to me recently that the water's coming in when we get heavy downpour. So, you know, this all needs to be watched. And, and I think that, you know, we're in the right, we got the right driver in the driver's seat. I think there's a lot of things for this Board of Selectmen to be watching when we're doing pavement management and trying to do the best for our community. And we're, let's face it, guys, I'll be, I'll be the first one to tell the taxpayers this is, that there's no way in hell that we'll ever be able to conquer a pavement management plan. We're going to do our best to stay on top of what we can, stay on top of. There's no way we're doing this. Shame on government over the last three decades because not all money's been allocated to road repair. And we have a shortfall now. We have roads that are in disarray, right? And, and I'll be honest with you, same thing with water infrastructure. I've been, I've been doing a lot of reading on that. And I think it was Newark, New Jersey, this weekend, that just borrowed $125 million for water infrastructure because of problems with water infrastructure. So, guess who's paying for that $125 million borrowing? Taxpayers. Because it was neglected over the years. That's what I'm trying to allude to, is we need to get to some of this stuff so it's not that big cost down the road.
All right, Mr. Manad, I'm going to, I'm going to give you one more homework assignment. All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Go, Mr. DeRoche.
Do I get a say on this?
Well, you're, you're, you ask, ask, go whenever you want. I'm sorry. I didn't realize you would look to speak.
Well, I've been listening, I mean, I've been listening to your, your arguments on this whole thing. And this management plan is an outline about what to do. And we do have to realize, if we have a road that's just bombed out, and we, we do have a responsibility to the people who live on these roads to maintain them for them, they are taxpayers. I look at this plan here, off the top of your head, how much did we spend to do Quaker Lane last year?
Um.
Would you say a million dollars?
No, 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 no way.
We spent
Yeah, for like 500 and something thousand for both, Quaker and, which is two miles away.
How much, how much, how much?
Wait, 500, a little over 500 for the two roads. That was for Gammons and Quaker, which is two miles of road. They're each a mile long.
Right. And they're both connecting roads. One takes from Kuschenet to Rochester, the other one takes from Kuschenet to Matamboise.
Correct. And then roads, again, we were kind of going, they were on the plan, but they're actually no water, no sewer.
No sewer, right.
That's kind of why we went with them last year. We're still trying to hopefully get something done with the water and sewer. So, that's
I mean, Hathaway Road, everyone seems to be in agreement to attacking that road and fixing it.
No objections.
And it, right.
It's one zone.
It's in our year plan. But I do agree, this plan does say, okay, in 2018, or we'll take this year, 2020, it's expecting this town to spend
This is 2019 we're in right now. We're already behind.
All right. Okay. So, in 2019, it's saying we should spend $1.5 million, but we get $360,000 to work with. So, there's a shortfall there, $1.2 million. So, we have to decide which roads are in the worst shape. And, and I understand about maintaining roads, you know, so they don't fall into disrepair and cost us more in the long run. But for $135,000, if you say you can do these four roads after traveling on them and seeing the condition there, and I, I tend to agree with you that, you know, we need to manipulate this plan. We need to stay, you know, stay with it as a guideline and, and stick to it as best we can, like we did last year. But at times, there's going to be roads that deteriorate faster than what this plan allows for. And I think as a town and for the taxpayers, we, we need to address those roads. So, if you're saying this is going to cost around $135 to do, you know, I'm, I'm okay with deviating from the plan at this, for these particular roads. And, but still keeping the plan as our guideline to it. But, but I, I do think there are times that we have to say, look, this road fell apart. And it's not in our plan for another four years. But we have to address it. So, that's, that's my point on this whole issue.
Okay. Uh, I'll send Mr. DeRoche.
Yes.
Back to what I was trying, what I was doing. Could I ask you to, to give us your three-year plan, using this as a guideline and where you see your priorities?
Okay.
To come back to us with, you've got, this is your year one, we've got your year one, we've got your current plan, to look forward two years and tell us what you want to do. So that it's, it's not a, you know, in, in understanding water lines and sewer lines and expansion, so that maybe we've got some vision for where we're going. Given, you know, given this, given the dollars you know are available to you, come back with, this is what I'm going to do in, so here's your 2020, give me your 2021, 2022, knowing the dollars available to you, the resources available to you, this is what I believe my priorities are going to be. Is it fair to ask for that?
Yeah.
For three-year plan at this point?
Yeah, that's not a problem. So, I'll make a motion tonight to appropriate the money that Mr. Manad's to do Hathaway Road, Conduit, Homestead, Myrtle, and Wilbur to go off a bid for those four roads, five roads.
And I'll, and I'll second it.
All right. Discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes?
So, Mr. Chairman, I just have one more shot thing. When I was looking over these plans and I have some paperwork, and I said that maybe Mr. Cabral and Mr. DeRoche don't have what I have because I've been on the board for a lot longer. When we took over the DPW, I passed on some information. It was about the age of the water infrastructure. So, they have maps in their office. As soon as you walk through the door from the hallway, right on the right-hand side, there's, there's two great big maps. A little tricky to follow where the roads connect after bid. They're two giant maps. And it's got all our infrastructure there, right? So, what I was, what I would ask is, on those maps, if we can make copies for the board, and then you, you kind of highlight
Years of the
With different highlight markers and, and put down, but we don't, we don't, we know we got bad piping in the ground. And we need to, this, this board needs to start doing something about water infrastructure. And we will, and we should. And that's our responsibility. Public safety's number one. So, we need to do something with that. Let's highlight the old pipe, the oldest pipe, with the streets and the pavement management plan, as Mr. Cabral's saying. Let's know what takes water infrastructure. We got a million bucks of surplus for water that we're hitting a tax rate, the rate pay is low, so we can do water infrastructure. I think it's time we start doing water infrastructure and paying them back for the money that they're paying in water rates, right? So, I think when we're looking at roads, I think it's important that we highlight and we identify, like, say, what's the average pipe? 75 years old or older, because we have such old pipe. Let's highlight all the old, anything over 75 years old and highlight those roads with a pavement management plan. So that this board, when we sit down, we have a real good idea of what the hell we're talking about when we're talking to the people in the public.
Like a three-year plan or a four-year plan?
A three-year, I think a three-year plan's fine, Mr. Cabral. You just got one. You give us three more years on this one. And you, and you, and you label out the roads, you highlight them, you tell us where, where all, identify all our bad pipes. And then this board can sit down and make rational decisions on how we're going to proceed with a plan to get rid of all this old infrastructure. And God forbid, we don't have a problem from now to then before we get the new infrastructure in the ground. Because we have, we have, Niab is what, 19, Cleveland Street's 1920. Niab is probably older than that.
It was, like I said, all this stuff's 1916, 1912.
How long, a month, 30 days reasonable, Mr. Manad?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. Yep.
I mean, I want to give as much time as you think you need.
It's a rainy day.
I like having expectations. Mr. DeRoche?
I have a question, Mr. Manad. These roads, reclamation and construction.
Yep.
Is that something that will be done this year in 2019? Or is this something now that's going to go to 2020 or next year?
I would, it's depending on the contract. It's, it's going to go out the bid. It takes a few weeks. I got to put it advertised in the newspaper. Then you got to put it, it takes a few weeks, going to go through the state because we got to submit this paperwork to the state. Now, you know, so it's probably a month out before I can get a contractor. And it depends, you know, on their schedule, how busy and who wins the bid.
Right.
Somebody local or somebody further away. And that's how it kind of goes. If it can't get done this year, I usually, we've been doing them like this time. And I, I get them done in the fall. But it's late. It's usually October, November when you start hitting the ground.
The bid's closed.
But I mean, the bid goes through till next year. So, if something happens, the weather or whatever, we can put it off to the, to the spring and get them done in the spring.
So, we'll pick a date a month out, put you back on the agenda? Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. DeRoche. I cut you off.
That ain't going to hold this up though, because you guys approved this. So, I can get the ball rolling.
Right. And for my knowledge, it says we have a balance of $175,000 and change. But we also have the $250,000 that was
We're pushing into that a little bit now.
Yeah. But I mean, that money's there. But then next year, we'll get another 300 something. So, that's why I'm trying to like, we're 2 and 1/2 million a year. But, you know, so we got 700. That's going to be 175 left over, all said and done.
Right.
And then next year, we get another 360, whatever, to be up to, you know, five something. You're going to have a little, you know what I mean?
Use safety net. And if you don't use the safety net, you roll it into next year's numbers.
And I, and I think what's important to note is, we just bought a used, the town people bought a used paver. Mr. Manad's on Main Street, over by Fire Station Number Two, doing that with a paver. Great work. I was out there today. Check it out. You guys are give a little site visit and check out the work that we're doing, well, they're doing out there.
Is that, is that something we're going to finish up in the next couple of weeks?
Tomorrow. Be done tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so. Well, because we've been jumping, we didn't have time. So, we've been on different jobs.
So, the money that we talked about, that we allocated it in an article, that was only a one-time revenue source this time around, which we can debate that some other time. But we're using a lot of this, some of this money to do road patching. So, in other words, you mentioned, we're going to get out to Hamlin Street, even though we know the bridge is coming in two years. The road is, is again horrifying and it's not, it's not good. So, some of that money will be allocated to going out and patching up the road because you have to buy materials. Let's face it, this material is expensive. So, we're doing a lot of road patching now with a machine instead of, you know, rolling it into the hole and kind of taking that approach. We have the machine to do it. So, we should be airing our roads in-house than what we were before.
In, in your opinion, doing Hamlin Street before the bridge is
Well, I mean, I, I, yeah, we got to do something. I mean, at this point, we were, yeah, we were waiting, yeah, we were waiting for so long. And technically, they were supposed to be in this fall. They were supposed to be doing that bridge.
Right.
So, they said it was supposed to go out the bid in the summer. And then they were supposed to do it this fall. So, now, as the other day, you came over here and sounded, yeah, two more years before they get over there.
We're going to patch, right?
Correct.
We're just patching rough spots.
Yeah, I might try to see if I can
Because all those trucks are going to be driving up and down doing bridge repair. They're going to ruin the road again anyway. So, we wouldn't want to do anything to that road until we're all done running trucks over it, right?
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Because that's almost a reclamation. I mean, it's down to
Yeah, no, no, no. Well, that's going to be a reclaim, correct. And when, when next job comes available. But we're either, we're going to overlay that or even try to rent a mill or something.
Oh, everything's
Right. But, but now, like, year to year, making the road
Three years away.
To keep it passable.
You're going to spend
It's, it's this patching, we can't like grind it down. We can't mill it.
That one I could probably grind, yeah. So,
Okay. Let's bring
That's right. But we don't own a machine. So, I'd have to look into, see if we can rent one or something or get a company to do it.
Right. Well, we had talked about that last meeting.
For what, sidewalk?
Considering it, no grinding, what we're going to do with grinding, all sort of thing.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Anything else, Mr. Manad?
No, I'm good. So, Mr. He, he just mentioned the, what we mentioned last time I talked to you, to the board and to you about is the, because we got the paver, that we need a grinder. So, can you give the board also, so we can make a rational decision too, on a price out a used grinder that's in good shape? Because I know the, the cowbys or whatever they use to do it can be expensive. So, maybe not use a new machine and then what we paid to rent the machine.
Yep.
So, maybe the board might want to look at that and say, you know what, we really don't want to be using $100,000 of Chapter 90 money to buy a grinder when it costs us, you know, free grand to do a road. And we can get, you know, 25 roads done for the same $100,000. And that might be the better way to go right now, right?
Yep.
So, I mean, let's, let's, let's put together a, a good plan.
Bring it in. Well, we'll get you on the, we'll go out a month or so. We'll get you back on the agenda.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Town administrators report.
I have nothing for you this evening. I'm asking you to give a light agenda.
Julie.
He was talking to Julie.
Anything for the intro, Tom?
Mr. Cabral, if I could, on the future business, just mention something to the board.
Well, let me, let me just, before we, before, Mr. Nolan, just want to thank you for your service. And this is your last, your last meeting with the town of Kuschenet. I do want to just thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure to work with you.
Pleasure to work with you.
And you're on to
It's my turn?
On to, on to, on to different things.
It's because of all of you that I'm able to do.
On to different things. So, thank you, thank you for your service to the town of Kuschenet. We, we will miss you.
Oh, you're going to be well taken care of. Oh, you're gonna be well taken care of.
All right, when she calls, you answer.
I will.
When I call you, you don't have to, when she calls you, you answer, please. I'm sorry, Mr. DeRoche, you were?
Nope, Mr. Gaspar.
Oh, Mr. Gaspar, anything?
Do you have any?
No, I'm sorry, future business?
On the future business, we just, just to keep everybody abreast of what's going on, today was the day of the Assessment Center for our police chief. And hopefully, they all made out well in the Assessment Center, but we talked about, we have it in the minutes here, we talked about putting together some questions for the candidates. It's in the minutes here, so I think that it would be prudent for the board, if we were gonna ask some questions, I would, I would ask that the board, just because of the way the process is and the way the process will be scrutinized, I think it's important that the board puts together some questions, and I think that we ought to forward those questions to Town Council to make sure that we're within our preview, pre-view of asking the questions.
The lawyer, excuse me, the Assessment Center will help you screen the questions. You can still send them through Town Council, no harm to file.
We wanna ask each candidate the same question.
You have. All, you have to do that, and we talked about the process, I just, I don't want this to get out too far, so they went through the Assessment Center, they'll be scored, it'll go to HRD, from what we were told, it'll be a couple of weeks for HRD to do their 20%, because I guess the Assessment Center's 80 and HRD's 20 based on attendance and years of seniority and all that that HRD does. And then they'll put.
They'll rank the candidates, one through three.
Yes, and then they'll come for us to do our own decision-making process, and we talked about asking some questions. I just, I'm just trying to be pro-activist, Cabral, and have some questions available, have it reviewed by Town Council so that we're not gonna be held accountable for, you know, let's just use me for an example, asking a dumb question, even though most people say there's no dumb question, but, you know, to not.
You can get yourself into trouble.
You don't, that's correct, and that's what I, I don't wanna screw the integrity of the process.
The other thing that we'll wanna definitely make sure that's clear is that if you pick number two over number one, you have to clear reasons why you do that. So you wanna remember that because of the civil service, because of HRD, the first candidate is your first, supposedly your first choice, to skip over your first candidate requires you to explain why. So those are very important things, and perhaps a visit again with Town Council, having Town Council come for a visit to walk through that process with you because it's an expensive mistake.
Could I suggest that any questions be submitted to either Ms. Hebert or Ms. Leonard?
We can submit, and Ms. Hebert is now the interim Town Administrator, so.
And remember, she's a lawyer.
And she's a lawyer.